All right, we'll now call the city council regular meeting to order for October the eleventh at six P M. With rise of the invocation and pledge of allegiance, an invitation given by Deputy Mayor Jim Bernard.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for being with us tonight. Thank you for your protection. We ask you to continue to guide us through this meeting that we shall do your will instead of our will, dear Lord. Give us the wisdom to do the decisions that are correct and the best in the city. Be it your Lord be out there and watch our children as we're coming up to our holidays starting with the end this month. Keep them safe, especially when they're on the streets and they're taking time off their in school. Please continue to be with our military, our law enforcement, our first responders, and especially all of the people that work in our staff in the hospitals that still working with us as we go through this COVID issue. But dear Lord, thank you for your love. Thank you for being with us tonight. It is in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we be seated. Plurk still called roll.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mary Anderson.
Here.
We have a form.
Can you, first up, we have proclamation for the National Long Term Care Residents Rights Month twenty twenty one. Anyone here for this proclamation?
Yes.
National Long Term Care Residents Rights Month two thousand twenty one proclamation. Reclaim my rights, my home, my life. Whereas there are one point three million individuals living in fifteen thousand six hundred nursing homes and over eight hundred thousand individuals living in twenty eight thousand nine hundred assisted living residential facilities in the U.S. And whereas the Federal Mercy Home and Florida Act of nineteen eighty seven guarantees residents and their individual rights. They will promote and maintain dignity and autonomy. Whereas all residents should be aware that the rights of the rights that so that they may be empowered to live with dignity and self determination. And whereas we wish to honor and celebrate these citizens, to recognize the rich individuality and to reaffirm the right to vote and participate. Including the right or have the say in their care and whereas individuals and groups across the country will be celebrating Residents Rights Month. The theme reclaiming my rights, my home, my life. To highlight the need for residents' rights to be recognized, recovered, and reasserted. The theme emphasizes the great mission of long term care facility as residents' home and ports of residence reclaiming their own lives. Now therefore, I, Garrett Addison, Mayor of City of Bonaparte, do hereby proclaim my third twenty first as National Long Term Care Residents Rights Month. And City of Bonaparte encourage all systems of support and services.
Thank you, Garrett. Any comments on that? Seeing none, I have number five, I have M L K event request with road blogger. Probably did it by Mr. Arnold Davis. I didn't see him back there, so he can answer any questions that you have for him. This is pretty standard, something we've done in the past. Are there any questions on this or Arnold? Arnold, do you have anything to add?
Arnold Davis, twelve fourteen South Carolina Avenue, A Buck Park. But I just wanted to introduce Mr. Teal because she will be taking over, but I'm going to be right there working with her until she get everything under control.
Understood.
So I would like to come up and do such stuff.
Well.
Hello, Teal McRae, ten fifteen West Dale Street, Department thirty seven. I am the president of South Garden Source.
Glad to have you.
You will be taking over the Martin King Services for twenty twenty two.
Very good.
And further. I would like to say, I would like to say that I think our young folks, our younger individuals for stepping up and taking charge and doing things. We really, really appreciate all y'all's effort. Thank you so much. Can I ask you a question of Miss Teal? Are you the Mr. Davis, be the one? And during this event time, and I looked at all the documentation and the paperwork, it looks fantastic. I know it's going to be a wonderful, wonderful day for the entire community in Bonaparte. Are you having vendors, would there be vendors there? Would there be food there too? I have a dinner while in the past, they had food, would there be food there as well?
Yes, it'll be food trucks or just serving food.
No, sir. I didn't notice that you wanted any, as you broke it down, nothing was for food on here. Did you to the church donate? That to donate, yes, so nothing else. That's this twenty twenty two, but after that, twenty twenty two, we want to reach out to vendor trucks. Okay, okay, y'all just moving forward. Yes, moving forward. Making it bigger and better. Yes, bigger and better.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, and also one of the criterias for the facade grant, the event grant, was that you couldn't buy food with it. That's why they reached out to the different private organizations and churches.
Okay, very good. Twenty twenty two after. Okay, after that.
Okay, any further questions?
Bigger and better thing, yes. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thank you, I are Paulos here, your service.
Thank you.
Great looking here.
Thank you.
I'm hoping we approve the event request for the road culture and event for the one King event that's projected for January seventeenth, twenty twenty two at M L K. Bill.
Okay, we have motion and second. Any further questions?
Mayor, is that also include twenty hundred dollar donation in your?
Their requests, yes.
It's reflected in the motion. Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll call roll.
Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mary Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. I have number six. We have a Veterans Day Celebration. Alan Norton, Collins County N double A C P. Is he here?
He's on Zoom.
He's on Zoom. Mr. Norton, could you give your address for the record, please? Go on mute first.
I'll mute yourself.
Mr. Norton, we can't hear you. I think you're muted, sir.
Yes, yes. My address is forty three fifty three Mercedes Street Sebring floor.
All right, thank you, sir.
Great.
Do we have a request before us here? Would you like to tell us a little bit more about it?
Yes, this is something we had in June. We had a Flag Day activity. We had a celebration there. This is at the same location and we have, this is Breakfast Day's celebration. And we have quite a few veterans in Highlands that we plan to have to attend.
Okay, do we have any questions for Mr. Norton?
I think, Mr. Norton, I'm not, correctly if I'm wrong, the N double A C P usually do a breakfast of the veterans, but because of the pandemic, they decided to do a a drive by and come and sit a little bit and meet with veterans lunch is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, yes. We won't be having the breakfast that we normally have, yeah.
And can I make a statement? Mr. Norton, Mr. Norton, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, before you have your event on for Veterans Day, just want to advise you that the 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 flags for the different branches will be up for that for Veterans Day and will remain up. Right now, we have the American flags, but each branch will be notified on the veterans' cards.
Oh, yes, I noticed, I noticed the five that were there. They look very good.
Yes, sir. And we're going to add the, we're going to do the others as well, okay?
Oh, that's great.
Okay.
Appreciate that. We certainly appreciate it.
So I don't see any requested funds here at all, and I don't see a road loader.
I don't think you requested that. You didn't need that, right?
There's no road closures, no.
No funds.
Okay.
It's speaking about the N double A C P is providing funds and and private businesses.
Well, I don't see much that you're actually requesting from the city.
They're just requesting to use the field, I mean, upon the veterans', the veterans' garden location.
Got it. Okay. Yes. All right, is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that will allow the veterans, Officer Allen Norton, to utilize the veterans', South Side Veterans Garden for Veterans Day Celebration on November the eleventh, twenty twenty one.
Okay. We have a motion and second. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call roll.
Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yeah.
Mary Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, number seven, we have the community get back for all barbecue cookout, Tom Ford. He here.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Norton.
All right, we'll give you name that for the record, please. Tom Ford, nine eighteen South Farm Avenue. Thank you very much.
I was probably give back plan.
It's something I do every year. Lord bless me in my company, so I try to get back in my community.
That's all it is. We appreciate that. So it looks to me like the only thing you're requesting is just for the location of the event itself, and I'm requesting road closure or any fundraising, right?
Oh.
All right, well, that seems very simple. Do we have any questions for Mr. Norton?
It's just going to be like the driver.
Yes. Let's appreciate it. Do we have a motion?
Yes. We can hear to get back for all lots you put together in M L K Sports Complex, possibly by the town board and state office. Second.
We have a motion and second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mary Anderson.
Yes. Mr. Norton, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, next up, we have the consent agenda. This will be the approval of minutes from September twenty seventh, as well as minutes from September, so. We have a motion.
Most of our consent agenda is September twenty seventh and September seventh as presented in Board Package C eight and nine.
We have a motion and second. Any further questions or changes? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mary Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. I have number ten. We have the interlocal agreement, C and B program through the sheriff's office in the city. I assume Garrett will be presenting for the sheriff's office tonight.
This is for the sheriff's office, for the Collins County Sheriff's Office. This is an interloper for the pre-activity community program. It's an alternative seventeen program between boards and sheriff's office to provide free labor. There have been still in the city of Bonaparte, there's been going on for some time. Want to provide the work of the city of Avon Park there.
We appreciate that opportunity. Do you have any questions for Mr. Roberts on us? Appreciate it.
Mr. Roberts. Would you, you said, okay, Mrs. Freiter, is this starting immediately or we're waiting to a certain kind of, are we, you know, everybody's ready to go to do this now?
The program is ready. It's just as to which citizens are reaching the program of coming to the city of Avon Park.
So are you using only the those that are, that knows, that are the residents of Avon Park versus if they live in Lake Facet? Are they working in the old separate cities? Is that how they go? Is that the way it goes?
That is my understanding. I don't believe there's anything hidden. Some of you live in Lake Facet and volunteering in Avon Park, but just the the use of digital. They have the opportunity to do it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Now would they, I got one other question. When they, if a person, how does a person get on this program? For what?
They have the sentence by the courts.
To do this.
Reports that sentencing program.
Like a community service hours or something like that? Okay, I got you. That's what I thought it was, but I wasn't sure. That's the good thing, because if they're in this area and they wouldn't have to leave, trying to say, well, I couldn't come because I didn't have a way there. You're already here or whatever area this is.
And that's how it started last year when one of the jail captains got me and COVID stopped it all, but that was it. Looked like the general counsel said they could come from elsewhere, but this was set up because there's people that were sentenced to this in Avon Park that don't have transportation to get down Sebring or to our sheriff's office.
That's good.
And to follow up, yes, as soon as they can give us the names of the people who are ready to go, because last year before COVID hit, we've already got our people trained. Went down to sheriff's office and were trained.
So those that are trained, Mr. Freiter, those city manager trainers, those that are trained, they will not have to do the fact that COVID and there was like a year or two or whatever. They don't, they won't be retrained. Am I correct or is there like annual training?
No, there was one time, but again, it would get to the sheriff's office, but we had five or six of them last year that were down to sheriff's office and received training.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to go ahead and approve. I have another D ten, interlocal agreement between the sheriff's office and city of Avon Park.
We have, we have a motion and second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Do the fight, the comfort of interest and I want for sure, I have to remove myself from voting.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mary Anderson.
Yes. Mr. Roberts, thank you very much. All right, we have item number eleven, puppetariums to be a second reading for ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty one.
In order to make an official sum after the city of Bonaparte, Florida, amending the residential subdivision, this is, you know, plus your line is forty seven point one acres of zone of P U D. Planning development from R one low density residential, generally located on the south side of Lake Damon, east of U.S. Highway twenty seven, north of County Road seventeen eight west. On the west side of North Gaster Road, provide for separately, provide for conflict, provide for effective second reading.
Thank you very much. Yes, want to give us a quick rundown of this project before we open the book here?
Yes, let me go ahead and be quick. You all have heard this information before. My name is Dana Riddell. I'm a senior planner. Was central for the Regional Planning Council. As you stated, the ordinance for consideration tonight is ordinance sixteen twenty twenty one. And this is from Mr. LaMarcus Hornbuckle. The project is called The Grand Oaks at Lake Damon. And they're requesting a zoning change on forty seven point one eight acres in the Grand Oak subdivision from the P U D, which is planned unit development to R one, low density residential. So we have on the screen a map of where the property is located. I'm sure you're all familiar with the area. And you're all aware that this property was plotted back in two thousand and six for a hundred and twenty seven single family residences. Then in twenty twelve, there was a zoning change to bring it to P U D. When it went to P U D, they said, all right, we're going to approve this conceptually, come back to us with the final development order and the final agreement, and we'll go from there. So they came back and they came up with a final agreement, but that agreement had phases and it had certain dates and deadlines, which were not met and were not applied for. So for that reason, they're making the request today to go back to the original zoning and the original intent of the subdivision, which would be to allow a hundred and twenty seven single family residences. As it stands today, they could do a hundred and twenty single family residences and three hundred beds in an assisted living facility. So again, just to go through the images, the existing land use is medium density residential. And the existing zoning is planned unit development. They're requesting a zoning change to R one low density residential, so they don't need a future land use change because it's already consistent with R one for just bringing back the zoning. These are the same slides you saw last time, so I'm going to go through pretty quickly, but city water and wastewater are already available at the site. And the city also serves the site for solid waste. In terms of traffic and transportation, there really aren't any other studies warranted since this will reduce the number of potential trips to the neighborhood. And we also have no concerns regarding school impacts because this will not increase the number of students to large amounts. It would be a very de minimis impact. And again, the city currently meets the open space requirements as they have for most recent zoning and future land use changes that have occurred. So it's not a concern at this time. And in the past, the planning and zoning board voted for approval and the city council also voted for approval. So tonight, staff and I believe the applicant and engineer are available with for any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions for them at this point, or we want to open up the public hearing? All right, public hearing for ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty one is now open. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak, ask questions, give comments, can now do so. I don't see any takers as of yet. One once, going twice. All right, public hearing for ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty one is now closed. Do we have any questions for the engineer or the applicants?
I just have one question. You say that a life plan for assisted living was?
Yes, so it had multiple phases. I'm sorry, Garrett.
Nothing.
Okay. Um, yes, it had multiple phases. The first phase was to allow a hundred and twenty dwelling units. And then the second phase was for an assisted living facility, but it was all contingent and based on each other. And that assisted living facility is, there's a quieted area for lots and everything like that there, so they never developed it.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion?
I'm hoping we approve the city ordinance, the city council ordinance number twenty.
Sixteen dash twenty twenty one.
Twenty twenty one, yes.
There's a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yeah.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just one question for the applicant. Any ideas to when this might get under construction?
So my company goes to.
Go to your microphone, if you will, so it'll be on the record there.
Um, we're hoping fairly quickly. That's one of the assets is that it was kind of ready to go except for the zoning issue, so we're hoping to start building in there pretty, pretty quickly.
And your name is?
LaMarcus Hornbuckle.
LaMarcus Hornbuckle. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, guys.
All right, we have item number twelve. This will be a second reading for ordinance fifteen dash twenty twenty one, micro mobility.
Order to city of Bonaparte, Florida, providing recitals as to the council intent, amending the city code by adding article three, micro mobility to chapter eighty six, street sidewalks, and the front faces. Provide for definition, applications for approval of micro mobility risk programs, operating range, operates its program, provide for micro mobility requirements and regulations for rental program operators and private users, provide for identification and insurance by program operators. Providing for fees, provide for storage in case of emergencies, extension of location, operating approvals, provide for contest, provide for complication. From bill or including codes, portances and resolutions, provide considerably by for effect.
All right, this will be a public hearing, but first, is there any updates, Jerry, on this? Have they done change?
The changes in the last reading.
All right, at this point, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for ordinance fifteen dash twenty twenty one. Anyone wishing to speak to the issue of micro mobility can now do so. Mainly involving the new scooter projects, wishing to come to downtown and other areas.
Yes, once this is, once this is approved by the council, I'll prepare a contract for bird, which is our standing. We can wait to go ahead with your, their project.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak in the vote? Seeing none, public hearing for ordinance fifteen dash twenty twenty one is now closed. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, is there a motion?
A motion that we approve ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Could we go ahead and call a roll?
Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mary Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
I have number thirteen. This will be the first reading for ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty one, City Council Health Insurance.
So we'll submit the city code, section two dash thirty three, the city code increasing council pay and allowing participation by council members in the insurance program. Provide for conflict, so ability to provide conclusion of code.
Mr. Shue.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to give us a rundown of anything that you find pertinent for us to know in this ordinance?
Uh, the only difference in the ordinance from last year is just the change of the premium of the health insurance. So that went from three hundred and seventy four dollars per month to five hundred and ten dollars and twenty cents.
Okay. Have any questions for Mr. Shue? Good job. Okay, there are motions.
And there's a motion we can go ahead and prove item number thirteen.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Anyone in the audience, anything? Okay, seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mary Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
I have number fourteen. We have the approval of the city twenty twenty two holiday schedule. David again, too.
Um, this is the holiday schedule that we received from the Highlands County Clerk of Courts. They decide the holiday that the county will be observing. And we just mirror their recommendations.
Do we have any questions or changes from the council?
These are our good days.
We have a motion?
Make a motion to go ahead and approve item number D fourteen holiday schedule.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion.
Have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
I just want, would like to add that even though the county is going with this holiday schedule, I think it was the federal government that added the Juneteenth holiday in, so maybe next year, when the new council come aboard, then they can consider, and the county, consider adding that holiday as well. That would be a very big advantage to the citizens.
All right.
David, I have a question. Mr. Shue, when this came out, you don't have an opportunity to ask that question?
No, the, when that federal holiday was made, I contacted the people that produce this schedule. And they said that it would be considered when they put this out in September and it wasn't added.
Wasn't added?
No.
I see. Okay, maybe we can, a citizen can do that to the county next year to add this, so that, and that's the way, that's what we're talking about. The county approves the, the listing, so if someone wanted to add something to that, they would have to present that to the county commissioners and go forward like that. And then you're right, it wasn't. Present.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, call a roll.
Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
We've got one comment to remind everybody that Avon Park is celebrating Halloween, Saturday, October thirtieth.
All right, I have number fifteen. We have the amendments to the finance director job description. Mr. Schrader.
A couple meetings ago, when, more than that, when we brought on Melody and she was made the acting director, was asked, I think, the deputy mayor, whether you're going to make her the finance director, but we had to amend, and I said then, I want to see how she did with budget, and I think we all know how she did with budget.
Very well.
Since she has been here, I personally talked to three CPAs that we deal with independently, and they all have nothing but pride regards to her. Um, David had talked to one on a reference, same thing, so that's four, so I was going to tell you four, but actually, it's a Friday, it's five, because Dan's among that, remember Dan? Yep. He actually had called David on Friday, just let know it was a year since he left here. He had gone online, saw the budget, and he said, man, she did a damn up job. So in here, we've tweaked it, I'll use the word tweak, that would fit in with her twelve years' experience. And there's some other things in here that had nothing to do with that, that we've taken out in the, in the last page. That red is just new language that we got six, eight months ago from Brian Cozy, just to say the date. But she, I can't say anything more than I haven't told you what you saw. She's jam up. She's taken that, now the budget down, she's more than, than I haven't told you what you saw. She's jam up, she's taken that, now the budget down, she's down in utility billing on there. She's, we've got a bunch of grants that need looking at. She's, uh, she's got her thick whiteboard. Or made today, two guys brought up because she's gonna track that and, uh, her experience shines through. She's, I can already see she's a good leader, gonna make some great changes down in utility billing and with new, with our new purchasing guy. And, um, she's, uh, again, I can't say anything more about her. What a great job she's done, but I think I'll see her pretty soon. So I would ask that you approve this amended so that we can make her the Finance Director and then we can advertise her name.
Very good.
I don't know, that's, I'll look at that when this is done because she's right now at the, the lowest.
Okay, is there any further questions on the job description? There are motions. I have to make a motion to approve item number D fifteen. Remember, it's a finance director's job description. We have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great job, Melody. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate having you. Item number sixteen, member number one, agreement between City of Avon Park and Timely Horn.
Yeah, this is on there, if you remember when, um, we got the grant, it didn't, they wouldn't include the Hella parking spot more than the planning zone. But because of that, that thirty-five thousand was taken out, Timely Horn had to lower theirs to, to meet up with the grant because they, they had theirs, their quote in there with the, with the grant. So all they've done, they've done is lowered it so it fits in better for them.
Okay, do we have a question about this grant? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'm hoping we approve, um, item number D sixteen amendment, uh, one through, amendment number one through one to, uh, between Timely Horn and the City of Avon Park and the cost of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and nine thousand and three cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item number seventeen, we have FAM requesting the city's application for the Build Back Better Regional Challenge American Rescue Plan. Mark, what's up? You're up again.
Well, FAM was supposed to be here. Actually, why is getting the whole time because he did some research on this and can probably answer some questions that you all may have.
Basically, we're, they want us to apply for an application for this. Then we do the work to do the application and then they want us to hand over the money.
Are they gonna write the grant and this gonna be presented for us? They're gonna write the grant and who's gonna present the grant? Is that the way it's going?
JT, we have the proposal. There's some confusion as to what needs to happen, so would you like to clarify as to what you'd like to see, what you're requesting the city to do?
All right, so the Build Back Better Regional Challenge Grants, um, the lead applicant has to be a city economic development board, it will say so. So as a for-profit entity, as for airport management, we are unauthorized to apply for that. So, and also because it is such a significant grant amount, it has to, the federal government is gonna wanna give that to a city, municipality, county, something of that nature. All the funds that we expect to apply to this would be for public infrastructure. I mean, so we want to treat them folks, uh, grant this size that probably would not awarding to any particular amount without, uh, being accepted. All right, so we'll have to take into consideration the wastewater treatment plan. How is that gonna service the airport? Can it be large enough to even service the community in full, things of that nature? So this is not specific to FAM, AHM, Ross Group, or any of our affiliated entities. And the draw schedule would be just like the way our P three is set up. So we have a project that needs to be done, if it's funded through AIP dollars, that paid dollars, state appropriations, FDOD. Oh, because you guys are the airport sponsors, those checks are open, all, they're always gonna be given you, a receipt of funds, and then y'all can administer it to us.
To pay for the project?
Yes, ma'am.
That, that, that's what I need to understand. Who's gonna write this grant? Are you all gonna write it?
We have already probably put about three hundred hours in this grant proposal because it is due next Tuesday at eleven fifty-nine PM. All of the grants dot gov's website will be down, six, seven, nineteen, so they'll probably.
Councilmembers, uh, this is Lowell Clary, if I could. This is a two-step grant. Uh, step one is essentially a planning study. And they're smaller amounts, under five hundred thousand, and step two would be due in twenty twenty-two in March. And that would be more for capital and similar type design, et cetera. And there's a whole range of uses that can be put into it, uh, as, uh, JT has mentioned.
So, so we grant bonds and precisely, the sooner would be like a pass through.
Correct.
That's, that's what my, most of my grants are that way.
Absolutely. Most, most grants that we get here are that way.
Yeah.
So we, uh, I mean, even the deferred vacancies on classic gladium, act fine, Highlands Aviation, even your ball fields, these are really can all be encompassing to address any of the infrastructure needs that are out there. This isn't for us to get specialized equipment, this isn't for us to get us a fancy jet plane out there and those. But, um, it is for wastewater, solar, broadband, right? We do not have broadband in the region. Uh, we had another conversation before the EBA, in order for us to be able to participate in any, just a staging area, we have to have cat five or cats ready, which we're not there yet.
Yeah, and what I understand, this is a highly competitive grant, uh, it's a bit of a long shot at this point, but if we can make it past the planning phase, then we have a better shot, right?
Correct. This is just concept phase. We won't go until the first week of December. At that time, they're, they will, the floor amount is two hundred thousand, the maximum amount is five hundred thousand over, before planning. And that's when we can get into the granular detail, as much as Clary said, and that package will weeks in March of twenty twenty-two. But the exciting thing is, we managed to get to the slightly competitive grant. Those funds will be awarded, uh, September of twenty twenty-two, which is less than twelve months from today, which ultimately could accelerate this P three agreement, what we tried to do from a thirty-year plan to a five-year plan because the dollars a day award here have, planning and implementation build out has to be completed by March of twenty twenty-seven.
Great to hear. Will the city have anything to do or say with how the money came spent?
Yeah, the, the saying is, because you'll be part of this middle process and then we'll have the grant assurances based on one PBA records.
Right, we, we would still have to approve what goes out after the planning phase.
Mel, Melody spoke to our honor. What did they tell you, Mel?
They said that we would have to go through our regular procurement policy.
Yes, okay, so this is a very interesting window that we're at right now because we have not closed the pending P three transaction. Once that P three is closed, then we will go through the procurement policy, which is one of the exhibits in the major master lease agreement that we have. So it would be as FAM, as, uh, we talked about city ordinance, I know that's not on the agenda today, for the P three transaction. So we would ultimately go through that step and not burden the city with those. But within development schedule, those site planning, uh, there's, you know, pad-ready sites, now we're going vertical, and so there will be draw phases.
Okay. Any further questions for JT or for a roll?
I have a, a question for Mr. Clary Lowell, if you could please. No matter what happens in, in the future with FAM or not, if we get this grant, I mean, you still have no problems with the city applying for this as well as if FAM does go through, you're letting them share or actually transfer the funds to them. Mr. Clary?
Uh, no, if, if you, there's not a relationship between FAM and the city. It would be only the city that would be eligible for using the funds.
Right, okay, but they'll be transferred to FAM if they get approved, correct?
Not unless they are under agreement with the city under the lease for the airport.
Okay, right, that, that was my question, thank you.
If I may further on that, too, in the, the master Build Back Better application, which is the SF four dash four A, uh, in the anti-lobby, and in, in that documentation, there is some award, some awardees and coalition members. So we reached out to, uh, you, you saw Frida, Florida Rule Economic Development Association, they have twenty-nine counties already supporting this. We've got the, uh, federal folks that are standing by, so time is of the essence on this, and we just wanted to manage our expectations during the short window.
Sure. Any further questions? Our motion?
I got, no question, I wanna add something, though, but yes, I mean, back to what Brenda asked. We will be filling out the application and you're providing basically the narrative for us.
That's correct.
Melody will be filling out the application.
Correct.
We gotta work together trying to get this money for the betterment of Avon Park.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, and something else in your motion, that they're asking for the mayor to, um, they provided us with letters, which we went over and we're fine with. One to the, the chairman of Florida Rule of Economic Development, um, basically, the mayor be signing that the city's supporting, asking for this. Also, um, um, federal congressmen and senators, they have letters for, so you, I'm assuming Jerry, they'd have to prove the mayor to sign these letters of support.
That's right.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
I'm hoping we approve item number D seventeen of, of the, um, request of the American Rescue Plan of Build Back Better Regional Challenge Grant with FAM. And that the mayor signed the recommended letters as presented by the city manager.
Nope, they're good job, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
JT, we appreciate your hard work and your team. We think you guys probably have done so far.
Thank you guys as well, and thank you for letting me be here on some of your last council meeting, and I appreciate your leadership for the city.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, city manager updates?
Classic quading.
That's a loaded subject.
That, that's the subject doesn't go away, but that's why we have Lowell and David doing this, please, so. About probably two and a half, three months ago, myself, Rick Reed, Rick, what, no, it was Rick Whalen was there, David Roberts, we met with Rob Hartman out there. Because they, the seed barn, that's the front building, the smaller two, uh, that, that is in really, really, really rough shape. They, uh, they have refrigeration units up, and I think it's, it's somewhere in Pope County, Winter Haven or something, and he was wanting, moving down here. And they were looking at if we replaced the roof, um, they may have to tear it off in order to put an insulated roof on that. So they asked me if they could get, um, some quotes on getting the whole thing done and then what the roof would have cost, would the city pay for that? And said, well, if you get that, I'll bring it back to council. I met with them Thursday, David Roberts, Rick Reed, myself, met with Rob. Uh, theirs came in at almost nine hundred thousand dollars, so his dad and his board said too much. So they're looking at doing a smaller, um, refrigeration, but they need the roof fixed and also the bathrooms. And when they were looking at their quotes on, which is on us, on the, on the lease, they've got a quote for the bathrooms, um, that we wouldn't use. But, um, when they were looking at getting things done, it was sixty-eight thousand. The roof, which is basically the duro turf, just going over what's there guaranteed for fifteen years, was forty-eight thousand. We're at the point, we've got to do this. I mean, we're, I think Jerry would agree, we're way past it. So I would like to go out the bid on these two. Um, I don't know if we're gonna have to use general funds. I, we cannot use infrastructure because of building the lease, but I got with, um, before the meeting started, got with, um, Melody and said, hey, could we use some of the American Rescue money? She said, you know, I don't know, I have to look at that, but I'd like to get your blessings to go out to bid, at least get these two things. We'll figure out where the money's coming from, but we, we've got to get it done.
I, I, I agree, um, but I just wanna add one additional thing. When we get it done, take, uh, copious photos because really, it's our responsibility to replace some of these items, but it's also their responsibility to keep them up. So if they let them deteriorate, you know, um, that won't be so easy next time for us to, to, uh, be required to do that.
Agree, because the photos we got now, I was gonna put them up, but it didn't get them, you'd say, oh my gosh.
I think we should move forward with that and, um, if we can use the CARES Act going to do it, so if not, we have to take it out of the general fund.
I'm sorry, we can't use.
Agreed.
I said, I, I feel that we should move forward with that, uh, suggestion by the city manager because I, it is, it is our responsibility, if we can use the CARES Act, that we, uh, funds, we should use that. If not, we should go ahead and take it from the general fund.
We actually sent our maintenance guy, Mike, out there because when we were out there walking through, they got some, some small blowouts that come holes in the main dome that we can fix, but I think if we get this fixed and FAM is able to get this leased, it's gonna be on them after this, so.
Is there any further questions?
Are you gonna be moving forward this week, anytime this month?
Well, we'll have to put a bid together and get it out to.
As soon as possible, okay.
All right, is there a motion to put this out the bid? We have a motion and a second. Last round of questions. Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
That concludes our agenda scheduled. Uh, is there anything further from the city?
Yeah, I just got one more thing. Um, last Thursday, I'd sent all of you that, uh, our mayor will be down to the grand opening of Wawa. Yeah, I got a smile on. And I told him I would go down there too, so they must have had a couple hundred people, at least, if not two fifty down there with, uh, Wally the Goose running around with a mask on, the mask, uh, but it was supposed, they were supposed to have, Mayor, uh, John Shute was down there and our mayor and John were supposed to have a, a building who could build a better hoagie, but the sheriff's house, um, wasn't there to take on the firefighters, but Darren, I called, um, your captain, he got four guys there as quick as he could, but too late to take them on, so the two mayors decided they'd take on firefighters. And Kaylee Tuck wasn't there, but her, her Dana and the New Abe were there, and they jumped in, they tried to give me one of them, I gave it to the mayor, let him do it. But I tell you, he never stopped smiling, had a great time, and they took out the firefighters. And when, when they introduced the elected officials, you know, they got an applause, and of course, the firemen, everybody likes firemen, they clapped, and everybody thought they're gonna win. So when the whistle went off, they went at it, and our mayor was smiling and going at it, and when it got done, guess who won?
Our mayor?
Our mayor. So that's because, you know, John Shute was there too, representing Sebring, is why he won the trophy. So they had to wrestle over it to see who got it first, so I just wanna present to you. That's, that's Wally the Goose there, but, uh, the mayor represented us well, and then if, if he doesn't admit he had a great time, he never stopped smiling. And, um, we, we all appreciate him for being down there. I know they did, I talked to their, their representative or, or the region marketing director, and she was thrilled that he was down there, Mayor Shute, it was, it was good.
We got, had a great time doing it, uh, you know, we really appreciate Wawa, opening up here in our community. A lot of people like that brand and they appreciate the services they offer, but, uh, we also got a thousand dollars to charity, breast cancer awareness charity. And, uh, like I said, we had a good time, so.
Well, Avon Park supplies water and sewer, correct?
We do. Every year they're in operation, we make pretty good money out of that.
Can I say something, Mr., uh, Mr. Manager, uh, and directing in regards to the mayor here? And, and I can tell you had a good time because you're still smiling, um, mayor, I, I'd just like to say, we really would like to see you in more things. That was fun, don't stop.
All right.
Continue to do this. I like that, because I know that, I know the mayor perceiving too, but I know you're gonna have to do it every time. Continue to do a good job, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mark?
No, that's it.
Well, like I said, that concludes our regularly scheduled agenda. Anything else that someone might add to the city?
Yes, um, I would just like to say, tonight is my last official meeting, unless the mayor decide to, uh, call a special meeting. Yes, um, I would just like to say, tonight is my last official meeting, unless the mayor decide to, uh, call a special meeting. I decided not to run the reelection for Avon Park. I've been serving up here for twenty-one years, it's been a pleasure serving my citizens of Avon Park. I really, really appreciate all the participation, and I wanna say to the new people that's coming in, that will be sitting up here, the main thing here is, what matters is the citizens of Avon Park. You have to do what's best for the city of Avon Park. We're not gonna always agree, we're gonna get angry at each other sometime, but that's okay, because what we are up here for, and we're elected, is to do what's best for the city of Avon Park. Mayor, it's been a pleasure, uh, Jim Shirley, it's been a pleasure, and all the other citizens, uh, that, council members that served up here, it has been a pleasure. My city manager, I thank you many, I take my hat off to you, and I thank you for sticking with us, city staff, thank you all so much, fire department, we're really good, I really appreciate you, code enforcement, the sheriff department, I appreciate you all very much. Mister Radio Man over there, thank you, too, because you have made it lively for the citizens of Avon Park.
I just, what, what happened?
I know.
And I'm gonna piggyback on you, Mister, uh, Councilwoman Gray, and just to say salute to you, I think we, you deserve a round of applause for the years that you've set up here, and you go through some stuff, but you made it through, so for you, thank you for here.
Is he around, Mister Gray?
Oh, yes, I ain't going nowhere, I'll be here, but thank you all so much, yes.
I don't think a, a round of applause can begin to touch the amount of work that you have put in, especially after a point one year, you know, a lot of people, you, you never really understand until you're in the position, and it's been in the position for a really long time, you know? And, uh, I, I really appreciate everything you've done for Avon Park, it's been a lot of interesting times, like you said, there's highs and lows, and ups and downs, sideways and everything you named, but, uh, you've done a good job, and I appreciate that you've done.
Y'all, thank y'all for making my field look real easy.
And we, we appreciate Shirley, y'all.
That was a, for me, it was smooth sailing, I like that.
Well, you've been a blessing, uh, to be on this council, and I appreciate every minute you've been here, and, um, it, it's really, it's been a good time, let's go ahead and watch.
It's been good for me, and I appreciate the opportunity and the experience to be on this side of the desk, and I thank you all, God bless each and every one of you, for the new people coming on, God bless, and, and start with your heart, start with thorn, God, and before you come to these meetings, I'm just gonna encourage you to pray about it, but sometimes it not, may not roll like you want to, but it's okay, because the, the, the most folks get the win, so just pray about it, and move on to the next meeting. God bless you all, I appreciate everybody, as I've gone around the entire city and told you in person how much I do appreciate you, and I do, but I won't stop.
Is there anything else we could do in the city?
Don't forget the vote coming up, yeah, this month.
That's it.
Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
See to opposition, we are here.
Thank you.
Thank you.